Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the June tenth, twenty twenty one Board Work Session of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Before we begin, I would like to ask everyone to turn off any wireless communication devices to avoid interfering with our meeting. Thank you. We'll now call to order an opening remarks. Before we begin, I would like to ask everyone to turn off wireless communication. I just said that. Also, we will be using Zoom Spanish interpretation services this evening. Please listen to the following announcement regarding interpretation services during tonight's meeting. The recording will play. Ms. Berkeley?
Playing in now.
Okay, thank you.
Loading.
Thank you, classes. This meeting is being recorded for those who cannot observe now, and information on how to view this and other meetings of the board will be posted on our board webpage. Now we will have a board prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Board Member Joshua Thomas. Please lead us in prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies. Being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you, Board Member Thomas. Now we'll have the roll call. Ms. Berkeley?
Good evening, Board Members.
Good evening.
Please unmute your mics for the roll call. Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Present.
Mrs. Adam? Here. Ms. Boozer Strather?
Here.
Mr. Burrows?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Present.
Mr. Montero?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mrs. Queen?
Present.
Mr. Thomas?
Present.
Uh, Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Coming back to you, Mr. Thomas?
Present, sorry.
It's okay. And Dr. Miller?
Here. Let's see. Thank you.
We have a quorum. Now we will move to adoption of the agenda for June tenth Board Work Session. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? So moved?
Second.
It has been moved to second to approve the June tenth Board Work Session Agenda. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Any abstentions? The motion carries and the agenda for June tenth has been adopted. Approval of the Board Minute, Board Meeting Minutes for May twelfth, twenty twenty one. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved? Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the Board Meeting Minutes for May twelfth, twenty twenty one. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, excuse me. Board Member Queen, okay. Uh, all in favor, aye? All, any nays? Any abstentions? The nays have, I mean, the ayes have it and the minutes are for May twelfth, two thousand twenty one, um, have been approved. Uh, report of the Chair. Before I give a report, uh, Ms. Board Member Queen has asked for a point of personal privilege. Board Member Queen, you're on.
Thank you so very much. I do apologize. That's what I wanted to remind you of, but thank you so very much. Um, let me pull it up. Thank you for this point of, um, personal privilege. At the heart of our mission is our scholars. We don't say this because it sounds good, but it should be the reason that each of us as Board Members serve. I want to take this opportunity given to me to apologize on behalf of myself and my colleagues for the unprofessional actions, emotional, emotions and conducts for our last couple of board meetings. Many of you have expressed embarrassment and a shame of the way that meetings were carried out and how we represented as leaders. While others have stated it's unfortunate that Board Members had to, no matter how you felt as a board, we must always remember that we are elected, we are elected and appointed body of public officials who represent Prince George's County and most of all, who serve the better, who serve for the betterment of Prince George's County Public Schools. As you all have seen us more unified in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, it shows that when we communicate better, we give one another respect of their views and opinion, then we achieve results as a board working together as a body. In twenty twenty one, it is still, it still can be done. To our CEO, our staff, our talented educators, who all adjusted at the drop of a dime during COVID, our awesome bus drivers, cafeteria workers who never stopped making students, making sure that our students were fed, for our maintenance staff, our security and office workers, nurse psychiatrists and community partners, we say thank you. No matter how you were connected to Prince George's County Public School as a board, we want to say thank you for your service to our scholars and for our community. To our scholars and parents, we are, we able to say thank you for entrusting in us to vote on the best decision possible brought to us by our CEO. To it, to, to anyone who have struggled with virtual learning because of a disability to adjust to the online or with the parents like me who are not trained experts at disciplinary or a teacher or student who just couldn't adjust, we apologize for this year. As we have heard many of you, and we know that our CEO and the board will be working together to make sure each of your needs are met. I truly believe that we have some of the best and the brightest creative techies in Prince George's County. But to my colleagues, we must continue to work together collaboratively to give them a awesome learning experience and environment that they are not only proud of, but they have the most updated learning technology and hands-on experience so that they can be competitive. As I was writing this, my eight-year-old peeked over and said, Grandma, why are you apologizing to the public? I looked at her and said, Princess, it will be a time in your life that despite yours or others' best intention, when it's personally or professionally, one party or person gets hurt. You might have been a little careless with your words or insistative to other parties' feeling. And in some cases, your actions may have been taken out of context. Whatever the case may be, you eventually going to apologize to someone or something or for something. Since it won't always be possible to avoid your coworkers, your friends, your family members when emotions run high, you need to learn how to ask for forgiveness and deal with uncomfortable situation to bring about unity and healing. So over the summer, I am hopeful that we as a board will continue to work collaboratively to do as we have done in the past and work on behalf of Prince George's County Public School System and Students. I want to take this time again to say I do apologize and I thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Board Member Queen. Now we will move into, uh, the report of the Board Chair. First, I'd like to share with the, uh, public that the, uh, Ms. Williams, the Vice Chair, and I welcome other Board Members to come and visit the Board Office at any time during this, this period of transition. Uh, the Board Chair and Vice Chair have been filling in the vacancy created by the, uh, unexpected departure of the former Chief of Staff. So we welcome your, um, input. It has offered us or given us an opportunity to see the work of the Board Office Personnel and look at the duties and responsibilities that they have in keeping our board professional and efficient. So, uh, we will be here. We have alternated days. We show up on Monday together. And I'm here on Tuesdays and Thursdays if you want to, uh, want to see or have a conversation with the Chair. And, uh, Ms. Will, uh, the Vice Chair is here on, uh, Wednesdays and Thursdays. So I just wanted to share that with our, uh, public to let you know that our Board Office, in spite of the lack of a, um, of, um, a chief, uh, a chief of staff, we are serving voluntarily in that capacity. Now, for our upcoming board meetings, upcoming virtual meetings of the board, uh, the School to Prison Pipeline Focused Work Group Meeting will be held on Monday, June fourteenth. Um, the operations, I didn't, a time wasn't given, but it's usually at five P M. Check our website, please. Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee Meeting will be Tuesday, June fifteenth. Policy and Governance Committee Meeting will be Wednesday, June sixteenth. Academic Achievement Committee Meeting will be Thursday, June seventeenth. The Zoom login details will be posted on the Board of Education's webpage. Again, please continue to check our webpage for information about upcoming board meetings and events. At this time, I will move forward to the, um, Chief Executive Officer, Dr. Golson. If you would please present your report.
Thank you. Good evening. Last week, we watched our last group of seniors walk across the stage to receive their diplomas. Congratulations again to all of our graduates. I know you will go on to achieve great things as you enter the next chapter of your life. Congratulations to our two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two Teacher of the Year, Adrian Leek, who is currently a tenth-grade English teacher at Duval High School. Ms. Leek has been serving our students for twelve years. We wish her all the best as she goes on to compete at the state level for the Maryland Teacher of the Year Award. This week, I announced plans for the upcoming school year. We look forward to welcoming students back to the classroom full-time, in-person learning this fall. For families of children in kindergarten through sixth grade who are not yet eligible for a vaccine, we will offer a limited application-based virtual learning option. For students in grades seven through twelve who thrived in a virtual learning environment and wish to continue, we will introduce a new online campus. The online campus will feature both live and recorded instruction. And it is an application-based program with limited slots. Families of students who are unable to return to school next year due to medical conditions can apply for our home and hospital teaching services. I hosted a telephone town hall last night and want to thank the over seventeen thousand participants who joined so that I could share additional information with families and answer questions about fall plans. In partnership with the Prince George's County Health Department, we are hosting free clinics so students ages twelve and over and their families can receive COVID nineteen vaccines. Clinics are open from one thirty P M. to five thirty P M. through June fifteenth at select high schools. Please visit our website to find a clinic near you. As a reminder, our comprehensive school boundary initiative is underway to analyze current school boundaries, feeder patterns, and program locations and develop scenarios for updating school boundaries. View the full interim report or report summary on our website and use the interactive boundary secondary tool to see how scenarios may impact your school. We are looking for parent and community input through our online feedback survey available June through June thirtieth. But we will also engage our community during the summer, so we're asking that stakeholders use this time to review and reflect on the interim report that's provided on the website. This fall, we will look forward to reconvening interactive community engagement session. Then, with the guidance of community insights, we'll be able to highlight and strengthen one of the scenarios selected. The plan that is ultimately recommended to the Board of Education will be the subject of public hearings and a comment period prior to any vote. Looking for summer learning opportunities? Come like the spark for learning with our summer programs. We offer in-person, virtual, and hybrid programs for students in pre-kindergarten through grade twelve that feature acceleration, enrichment, original credit or credit recovery. Sessions begin July and last six weeks. Please visit our summer programs webpage to learn more. The annual Summer Food Service Program will operate beginning Wednesday, June sixteenth through Wednesday, August eighteenth. Grab and Go breakfast and lunch meals will be available on Mondays and Wednesdays from ten A M. to one P M. at sixty-two locations. Students attending in-school summer programs will receive breakfast and lunch. Additionally, select Prince George's County Memorial Library locations will offer free lunch to children under the age of eighteen from June twelfth through August twentieth. Monday through Fridays from one to two P M. Please visit our website for summer site locations. Also, this summer, we will be providing an opportunity for community input on our proposed spending of the Federal American Rescue Plan Fund, formerly known as the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, or, because you know, we love acronyms, S O three. We will ask individuals to rank our categories based on their priority. In addition to the survey, we will host a virtual listening session to gather feedback. We're currently waiting for additional guidance and direction from the Maryland State Department of Education, so please look for more details. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. Now we will begin the public comment on the agenda and non-agenda items. For those members of the public who signed up to provide written or electronic public comments, comments will be posted on Board Docs for review by Board Members and public. Uh, written or recorded comments that can be accessed, accessed in Board Docs. Colleagues, we have seven registered live public comment speakers this evening. A note to the public speakers. You have been registered to speak in a public forum where the Board of Education will listen to your comments. The Board will not address your comments. You must speak on the topic for which you have been registered. All registered speakers will have three minutes to provide comments. At the sound of the buzzer, speakers may complete that sentence only. Registered speakers may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. Speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You will be warned once. If you continue, your comments will be muted and you may be asked to leave the meeting. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names. For example, principal, CEO, deputy superintendent, et cetera. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public participation process to move smoothly. Our first registered speaker for tonight is Michelle Clark, Teacher Concerns.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's good to see everybody. Um, but before I get started with my other comments, I would like to thank my Board Member for, in District Six, for her words at the beginning of the meeting. That brought me a, a great deal of relief, um, and I hope everybody can heed her words. Because as we all know, Dr. Golson just mentioned money from the American Rescue Plan. You've got E S S E R one, two, and three. And then in top, on top of that, we have the Blueprint for Maryland's Future Funding that will be coming through over the next several years. We're talking hundreds of millions of dollars. And we have to all conduct ourselves professionally so that we can get this money, spend it appropriately, and do what's best for our students. The bottom line is it has been disturbing at best to watch these meetings lately. Um, and most, some of you have, have stayed out of the fray and conducted yourselves very professionally, and, and that's good. But it, it's hard to watch, and I can't tell you how many people come up to me and say, what's wrong with your Board of Education? Why can't they get it together? And I just want to give that message to you all publicly that there've got to be better ways to work together. And whatever it takes for, for you all, you're not always going to agree on anything or, or everything. Anything, I would hope you'd agree on some things, but you're not always going to agree on everything. But we should show appropriate decorum when we're addressing those differences. And what's happening lately is more like an episode of Jerry Springer than a professional meeting. It, it's very disappointing to watch. Um, I just wanted to, uh, go on and urge continued professionalism. And then I also wanted to mention, I saw this as the second reader for the E L L Work Group Recommendations, English Language Learners. And I strongly urge you to pass all of their recommendations, having read the report thoroughly. Um, the dual-language programs, if you've got enough English language learners in a school, is going to help students tremendously. As we know, when children come over and they're newcomers, they first develop the social language, but getting them the academic language is much more difficult. And if they can learn the academic language in their native tongue, it'll be a lot easier to translate that learning over as they learn more English. Um, it, it is a proven system and it works. So I, I would love to see it come here. Uh, the virtual idea for those where there isn't a huge population is also a good idea. I just want to see our students succeed, and I've noticed the number of English language learners has been going up the last several years. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Our next speaker is Xena Whitworth, a concern. Ms. Whitworth?
She's coming in.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Let me know, let me know when the timer begins. Peace and purpose, everyone. This is my final exam speech for my students who have been watching all year. Public education needs an enema and teachers need respect. Mental health issues should, should and needs to be the focus for all. The, this public comment is inspired by the words and tone of James Baldwin. Tonight, I may have some very reckless things to say, so I have, so I want to make it absolutely clear that I'm talking for myself and I'm not representing PGCEA, PGCPS, or PTA, or any ANC. I'm talking to you as Xena Whitworth, who was born in Washington, D.C. and started and entered Prince George's County in nineteen seventy-four as a kindergarten. And I feel like I have certain responsibilities to the people that produced me and all of you. And I'm speaking to all of you as, if I may say so, not as an organizer, not as a black leader, a public but as one of the writers and speakers that you produce. Every person born in this country until this present pandemic moment is born into a country where we possess the agony of trying to find ourselves in ways that are not demeaning and how we manage to survive while many more perish and are perishing physically and mentally every day is nothing short of a miracle. On my, on my way to finding the link for tonight, I noticed that there were several schools closed due to no A, no A C, which is part of my reason why I'm here. Virtual access, school year twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, teacher-led virtual academies and busing, no more separation, go back to community and family values, unity for all, safety for all Prince Georgians. Have you heard? Prince George, Prince George's is the prison pipeline. Let's end it. Virtual access should be open to all teachers, staff, and students. Please notice that the leader offers access to vaccine. At no point has it been said it is mandatory to have it, and it was never said that we will lose our jobs. However, administrators, overseers have been spreading information that has, has put members in a state of anxiety of losing their job for fear of getting a vaccine. Virtual access twenty twenty-two. The student, the schools are not safe. Social distances should be maintained. Smaller class sizes, build more community learning hubs. There's no such thing as the lesser of two evils in the political machines in the United States of America. The people have been rallying, people have been killed despite our outpour of social media captures, trying to change that consciousness of this country, and still nobody heard and nobody really cared. And poor Marcus, Martin, Malcolm, Biko, Mandela, Stogie Carmichael, George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, say all of their names. And don't forget the thousands of young men and women who are jailed and killed every day by the hands of their own people. People who spend most of their time in and out of physical jail, mental slavery, are trying to redeem what we claim we live by. The principle of love thy neighbor, the principle of love. However, race, Christianity, and power are so tied together, and self-interest is the fabric that's destroying our country. My point is simply this. What are we doing to navigate our future in the world? We have the opportunity to meet the expectations of our ancestors who were great kings and queens. Prince George's County is my Timbuktu, and I need for all of those who are listening that if we do not put the mental health needs and safety of our children and those who teach them. Children are not okay. Honestly, every if we start there, we may have a solution to an A G O problem. Thank you for listening to me again. I'm Xena Whitworth, teacher at the Mecca of Excellence, Charles Herbert Flowers. Keep
Thank you, Ms. Whitworth. Our next speaker is Tanya Wingfield, General. Is Ms. Wingfield present?
She's on her way in.
Hello, can you hear me? Will you hear me? Hello?
Barely.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good evening, Board Members and Dr. Golson. I just have three, uh, things I just want to share. First, the School to Prison Pipeline, uh, this definitely is an important issue. However, I would suggest that the committee consider using some free services from companies like, uh, Kiamcha Youth Empowerment Organization that was founded by the Honorable Dorothy Bailey, the National Alliance of Faith and Justice, Justice, their pen and pencil movement, and Assala for some of the, um, engagements that you want to do. For the E L L Work Group, uh, again, I want to commend you on, uh, some very good recommendations. Um, one of the things I did see is that some of those recommendations appear to already be in the Consolidated Strategic Plan. Um, and so some of those things may already be addressed in the current curriculum. Uh, one other thing that could, would have been helpful for the public is that if you had done a feasibility study to include with those recommendations, because, uh, based on the numbers from Prince George's County, we only have about twenty-eight thousand E L L students of one hundred and thirty-five thousand. My final comments are for our state legislators, and I would like to, to remind them, Dr. Martin Luther King said, our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter. There's a lot of things that really matter that have been happening on the board. It matters when a board member fraudulently signs a contract. It matters when meetings are held in violation of state law so that it conceals the actions, uh, from the public. It matters when an officer of the board creates a position, uh, for a friend to pay them ten thousand dollars a month and uses a pass-through company to, to divert the funds. It matters when board policies are being changed and they don't include the critical information from the C E O about the legal ramifications and operation impact. It matters when we, when we constantly have seen, and I want to, I want to thank my board member, Ms. Queen, for apologizing. But it is hard to see a coordinated action of a clique of board members always voting on what is their agenda, and it's evident. And it matters when we finally have a board chair that is not afraid to expose corruption that's in the school board. That's something that we've been fighting, that's a noble action, and we should be seeing our elected officials stand. So you're silent, you have been silent too long. It is time for our state legislators for you to stand up for the citizens of Prince George's County and do what you're supposed to do so that this board operates orderly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wingfield. Next is Teresa Dudley, P G C E A Budget Reconciliation.
She's on her way in.
Thank you.
I don't know if you can hear me or see me.
We can hear you.
Okay, I can't see myself, so that's why I was, I was wondering if I was actually on. Don't start the timing, here we go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you for this opportunity to come before you again. I will not go into the issues because we have bigger issues to deal with, and I'm not going to waste my time on small things because you are big people and we need to just do what we need to do. We have the budget reconciliation in front of you today, and I'd like to address that. It is very important to P G C E A and the rest of the employees that our contracts are honored in any budget reconciliation and that we look at ways to utilize our American Rescue Plan resources to make sure that the schools that I have been receiving calls all this week about air conditioning systems that are not working correctly and that are falling apart. I've been texting Mr. Burnett and Dr. Golson. I I pick each, every time I get one, I pick one of them to send it to because it's been a lot, and I didn't want to burden either one of them. But I do want to say a couple of things also about the budget. Well, you know what, before I take, but talk about the budget, I do want to say I am so proud of Adrian Dawkins Leek, our P G C P S Teacher of the Year, who I have known personally for over twenty years, running around cheerfully with pigtails in her hair. To see her rise up and be Teacher of the Year. Her, her mother and father and I have been friends for a long time, and I'm so happy that I've been able to watch her grow in this profession. So I was trying to show the picture of her and I together, but I couldn't get that to work today. So back to the budget, we need to make sure that we do everything we can to continue to serve our children, continue to make sure that our community schools have the resources that they need, that are, that the, that the Prince George's County Public Schools Steering Committee for Community Schools includes the Alliance to Reclaim Our Schools, Eros, at the table, because we are out there actively organizing the parents, because the parents are part of the community, and they're an integral phase in this. We need to make sure that the reopening that is coming up is done in the best interest of everyone. And I want to thank Dr. Golson and Mr. Burnett for working with P G C E A on coming up with a timeline that is acceptable and making sure that everybody had the opportunity to reapply for summer school that wanted to teach summer school. We are very concerned about some of the proposals for the reopening in the fall, but we do want to work with Dr. Golson. And I ask this board to make sure that, and the constraints that you are in, the laws you have to work on, you need to work together. Thank you for your time.
I don't see Young or Ms. Wright on the list as attendees.
Dr. Miller, you're muted.
You're saying you don't see Ms., I have Ms. Donna Young for General, Ms. Phyllis Wright for Operations Policies, and then Crystal Carpenter, E S L E L Board Recommendations.
I don't see either one of them. Shall we go to Ms. Carpenter?
Sure.
Okay, one moment. I don't see Ms. Carpenter either.
Okay. Then, the testimony of commentators who registered and provided written or electronic testimony have been posted on board docs for review by board members and the public. We will now move forward to discussion item with Dr. Golson.
I'm sorry. Chair.
Board member, Queen.
I'm sorry, I just, Ms. Wright just called me. She says she's in, but y'all not letting her in. So I just wanted to make a note that she says she is on the meeting, she hear you calling her name, but no one is letting her in. So I don't know if that's the same thing with other people, so I just wanted to say that.
Name is not listed, is she dialing in? Usually we ask that folks log in as the same name that they register with.
She's on a phone, I know she's on a phone, but she said she tried it and it didn't work, so I just wanted to say that.
Well, if she's on the phone and she'd like to speak through the phone, I will permit that tonight.
You want to go ahead and speak to the phone, Ms. Wright?
Yeah, that's fine.
Go ahead, go ahead, you can speak to the phone, they can hear you.
They can hear me through your phone.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good evening, board members. Phyllis Wright, P T O president of William Harle Academy. Right now at William Harle Academy, the air is down. It's uncomfortable for the teachers. And the reason why I was calling is because I am so appalled the way this board has been run. I would like to see us moving forward in September. Try to do a little bit better. Dr. Golson has done a wonderful job. I'm home, recovering from surgery, so I can't talk that long. But it's just so amazing to me how we all are fighting each other instead of fighting together. I have my children watch the school board meeting when I am on. And it's not a good example for them to see the way it's been conducted. I don't know about a clique, I heard a young lady said something about a clique, but I think everybody should be able to vote any way they choose to be fit. We all put you all on this board to do better for the children, the teachers, the parents, and for the community of Prince George's County. I would like to see us do better instead of embarrassing ourselves in the public with our dirty laundry. So if there's come a time when you all can sit there and join together, it has to be something where you guys can can get together because I see the separation. I wish, I hope, for my children's face within the county schools that this board can sit down and do the work that they were there sent there to do. That is to make our schools better, to help our teachers, our custodians, our bus drivers, and to better the education for our children. And if you guys can't come on a decision to do that, I think you should try to do something different. I feel bad that we, that I see on this school board, has conducted themselves in a manner that they are. I am so disappointed as a parent to watch this and to have my children watch this. It's unacceptable to me, it's unacceptable to my neighbors, it's unacceptable for my children and all the schools of Prince George's County. So if we can sit down and do a little training, do a little better, and stop fighting, and stop blaming, and start joining together and do something better. Dr. Golson, I love her dearly. I wish she could just take control over all of this, because it would be going on, because she's the only one I see with a stern parent. Instead of everybody blaming, all of this over a thirty-day note for an attorney. This is unacceptable. We need an attorney going forward. I need this. Thank you so very much for allowing me to speak. Hope in the future that you all can do better. If not, please step down. Because this last year has been a come on, we haven't had this on this board. It's been peace. Now we have all this chaos and confusion and people talking about people breaking laws, people in the cliff. You have to prove all this stuff, you can't make accusations.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Okay.
Now, does Carpenter show up, Ms. Ellis?
Yes, Ms. Carpenter, as well as Ms. Young.
Okay, well, then I'll go with Ms. Young because she was first.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Young? I can hear you, I don't see you.
Okay, I don't know what's happening either. I sent my board member, Ms. Ahmed, information to saying I was here. But thank you, guys, for figuring out how to get us in. Good evening, Board Chairman, Board Chair, C E O, and Board Members. I'd like to speak today regarding the continual disregard for procurement, best practices, COMAR, and FAR regulations. For over twenty-five, with over twenty-five years of experience in procurement and contract management, I am absolutely disturbed at the questionable actions of the board and blatant violations that has transpired over the last several board meetings. The Pew Law Group agreement signed by the board members that had no signature authority made the contract null and void. Additionally, the entire process was or should have, should be under investigation at a minimum review for unethical, unlawful, and criminal acts. It was my understanding that this was the case, as I personally filed an ethics complaint. Board Policy thirty-seven oh four states that the Board of Education expects that all funds extended for goods and services shall be used in the most effective, efficient manner possible, and that the procurement of that material, the materials, supplies, equipment, et cetera, will be conducted in accordance with the laws of the state of Maryland. So why was a contract that was deemed fraudulently obtained failed to go through the proper procurement process? Was not, it was not only under consideration again at the last meeting, but voted on by this board? Why was there even a vote for any contract at all? When in fact, the vice chair and the board chair had the ability for a contract under twenty-five thousand to sign it and move forward, especially when it went through the Director of Purchasing? Now, it states in the, the Policy thirty-seven, thirty-seven oh four that the Office of Purchasing establishes the procedures in accordance with the Education Article. School administrators and office heads can obtain goods, equipment, services essential to the effective operation of the school system. So I have a question for you all. Is not the board a office of the school system? If it is, then please explain why that contract that was already properly vetted was not acted on? You had a binding contract in play. The other contract, the Pew Law Group, should have never even been voted on. Additionally, the Purchasing Supply Manual states that the Director of Purchasing has the responsibility to negotiate and place, negotiate, place, and modify contracts. It does not say every board member has that right. So if that previous contract did not go through, then I do not understand how it was brought up again. We have got to get purchasing actions under control. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Next is Crystal Carpenter, E S L, E S L and E L L Board Recommendations.
Good evening, board members, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. It is definitely a pleasure to be here tonight. I come before you today as a parent and aunt of children in Prince George's County Public Schools. I also must proudly admit that I am a graduate of Prince George's County Public Schools a few decades ago. My testimony is regarding the English Language Learners Focus Group Work Report and Recommendations, but I also must admit it is in line with the Blueprint for Maryland's Future Discussion in some ways as well. I want to say at the onset that I commend the work of the English Language Learners Work Group as we continue to consider ways to help E L Ls increase their academic achievement. It should be clear to everyone, the educators need all the resources at their disposal to meet these challenges. My testimony is more of an ask to ensure that we are actively thinking about a critical aspect as it relates to the human resource piece that I think will help our overall county initiatives toward being more multilingual, more embracing multilingual. My daughter is currently a rising eighth grader in middle school. I also have a son that is currently a rising senior, both have been doing really well in school. My children, like many of this P G S P S school population, are minority students that are native English speakers with no secondary language to start with. At elementary school, they were offered Chinese as a language. The students never was given a book to reference at home or homework for that matter. Despite what they learned the previous year, each year became a repeat of the same information, which I think we all would agree was not the best use of resources. My daughter then transitioned to middle school in sixth grade. She took the entry-level Spanish course. In the fourth quarter, the teacher left, they gave her a substitute. In the seventh grade, she then repeated the same information and coursework that she had learned the prior year. And this was deemed by county standards acceptable. So there has been no additional level of engagement. She's a current seventh-year student going into the eighth grade. If we continue this course, we will consistently, and I believe unintentionally, create a workforce that is not prepared for changing racial dynamics in our county. I think one other end of the E L L conversation is making sure that we are working to ensure that our current student population are going to be bilingual. As some of the recommendations have already noted, it's that we talk about this when we talk about economic development in our county, and we talk about looking for initiatives within our county, but how are we making sure that our children that are taking classes are ultimately leaving knowing how to speak two languages? I think that's going to be helpful and fruitful for conversations with their classmates and just helpful overall for our, our county. Those creative strategies include ensuring that all of our students have the opportunity to take part in language classes from elementary to high school. My son was not afforded the opportunity to take any language classes in middle school because they didn't have time. I just want to make sure that as you are thinking about funding initiatives, that we make sure that we're thinking about creative ways and forward-thinking to lead to more equitable outcomes for all students and ensuring that we are, our workforce is going to be more competitive as a result of those efforts. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. The testimony of those who have commented will, and registered, will be, and who have provided written or electronic testimony has been placed or posted on board docs for review by board members and the public. We'll now move into a discussion item with Dr. Golson. Would you please introduce item four point one?
Thank you. Four point one will be a presentation by myself and Mr. Michael Hertzmann, who is our Chief Financial Officer, and we will present the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two Recommended Operating Budget Reconciliation. Thank you. Good evening. Over the last two weeks, County Council has passed its budget, including allocations to Prince George's County Public Schools, and the state has updated its state aid and co and blueprint calculations. We now have a clear picture of our revenues for next year, and it is evident that we face a significant operating budget deficit. While we do anticipate federal grant increases for next year, these are primarily restricted to COVID-nineteen relief. With a few exceptions that we'll discuss in this presentation, these grants will not directly alleviate our unrestricted budget gap. Tonight, I will briefly recap my original proposed budget and the amendments in the Board of Education requested budget. Then I will outline the current deficit, and then finally, I will delineate. And then finally, I will delineate a recommended plan to balance the budget while ensuring that all of our students receive the education and supports that they deserve. So if you could actually go to slide number three, please, which is the one here. Thank you. I titled my pre, I titled my proposed budget, Bridging the Divide with Transformation, Equity and Innovation. Because this year's budget addresses three divides in our school system. Shortfalls and inequities in our state school funding allocation, gaps in resources and achievement within Prince George's County Public Schools, and our overall funding deficit in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two operating budget. Next slide, please. Last October, the Board of Education adopted its priorities for this budget cycle, including mental health support, academic program innovation, facility safety, disinfection and compliance, continued out-of-school learning and class size. Next slide, please. I also outline my plan to continue to transform Prince George's County Public Schools through equity and innovation, including commitments to addressing the digital divide among our students, mental health support, properly maintaining and sanitizing our buildings as our students and staff are now back in our schools, effectively budgeting at our schools and ensuring that our instructional and operational programs meet our high academic and fiscal efficiency standards. This year's CEO focus areas align closely with the Board of Education priorities. Next slide, please. Prince George's County Public Schools is funded over ninety percent by state and county revenues. And both the state and county suffered extraordinarily in their revenue losses during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Prince George's County Public Schools, like all school districts, depends on growth for sustainability. One point nine six billion dollars or eighty-two percent of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two Board of Education requested budget is allocated to salaries and employee benefits. These costs are dictated by the multi-year labor contracts and the rising national trends in healthcare costs. Additionally, the cost of two other major expenditure categories, technology and textbook, are increasing well above the rate of inflation. A school district cannot survive in the long term with flat revenues. This chart illustrates our historical reliance on escalating revenue. And over the last five years, Prince George's County Public Schools has depended on an average annual increase of forty-eight point nine million dollars in state revenues and twenty-nine point three million dollars in county revenue. Understanding that the state and county would not be able to afford these typical seventy-eight point two million dollar annual increases during the pandemic, we have taken unprecedented steps to close the operating budget gap without additional state or county unrestricted revenue. Next slide, please. In my December presentation, I went into detail on the projected loss revenues as well as increased expenditure, including eighty million dollars in additional employee compensation, expanding mental health supports to more schools and a fifteen point two million dollar subsidy for the Food and Nutrition Fund necessitated by the pandemic. Our operating budget gap at the time of the CEO's proposed budget was one hundred and ten million dollars. Next slide, please. In my proposal, we bridge this budget divide through a current year budget reduction, including a hiring freeze, an overtime freeze and discretionary reductions, centralized budget reductions for next year, programmatic efficiencies, reconciling items and additional use of fund balance at nearly twice the level of any prior year's budget. Next slide. As the Board of Education finalized its budget request, members considered and approved several additional key investments. Next slide, please. Those investments were high dosage K through three tutoring, additional support to our Bridge to Excellence Schools, contractual supports to our at-risk students, the Transit Academy for Working Students Program to keep working high school students on track to graduate and give them additional flexibility, internships for our students in areas related to science, technology, engineering, arts and mathematics, and an academic and operational audit of special education. Additionally, the original proposed budget request did not include a fifteen million dollar payment for the alternative capital financing of six new middle schools. Our MOU with the county was completed after I proposed my operating budget. We have previously assumed that that payment would be within the capital budget, but it is on the operating budget side. All of these additional items total a forty point seven million dollars, total forty point seven million dollars, which was added to the county-funded revenue request. Next slide, please. County Council adopted this budget two weeks ago and the state released its updated state aid formula projections last week. In the most recent state aid allocations, the unrestricted revenues were about eight point seven million dollars lower than the amount included in the board's requested budget. The county council allocation was thirty-nine point five million dollars short of the requested amount. And these two changes placed our unrestricted revenue shortfall at forty-eight point two million dollars. Each year, the CEO's proposed budget is based on positions and contracts as of December, just before I present. Minor changes occur throughout the remaining year that must be carried over through the following fiscal year. For example, we may budget a vacant position at a salary of fifty thousand and a new employee is hired for fifty-five thousand. Or on the contract side, we may have an opportunity to renegotiate a contract and achieve annual savings of twenty thousand. And in a system this large, these changes add up quickly and must be accounted for as we balance the budget. This year, they helped us by reducing overall expenditures by two point three million dollars. That places our overall fiscal year two thousand twenty-two unrestricted budget deficit at forty-five point nine million dollars. And at this one, I'm going to switch over to Mr. Michael Hertzman, who will continue the presentation for a few more slides.
Thank you, Dr. Goldson. Before uh, Dr. Goldson outlines her recommendations to close the budget gap, uh, we wanted to share a little more about the revenue. Uh, she uh, did share about some of the decreases we have seen, but the revenue news is uh, not all bad. Uh, there are new federal and state grants that will provide restricted benefits next year. And the uh, General Assembly passed the Kerwin two bill, which will bring us new restricted and unrestricted revenue down the road. Uh, however, that unrestricted help will not start until FY twenty twenty-three. Um, the blueprint for Maryland's future uh, or the uh, Kerwin two law uh, became a law effective April ninth. Uh, over the next ten years, this law will comprehensively change the way that school districts in Maryland operate, report, receive revenue, and especially the way that school districts are held accountable for its, for their funding. A full presentation on the Kerwin Blueprint is actually the next item on tonight's meeting agenda. So we'll wait to discuss the uh, details on that new law. Next slide, please. Uh, we've also been fortunate, as we've discussed earlier tonight, to receive uh, notice of two additional federal grants since the Board of Education's requested budget. Uh, both of these grants, uh, S R two and S R three will be uh, very helpful in our recovery plan over the next three years. And while there are many great uses for this grant related to uh, COVID nineteen recovery, augmenting student and staff safety, enhancing our technology program, addressing student learning loss, the uh, federal grant programs for school districts uh, are not designed to replace lost revenues. Because these programs are restricted to fourteen specific COVID nineteen uses, except in limited places, uh, which Dr. Goldson will outline momentarily. Uh, these will not help us to close the unrestricted budget deficit for FY twenty twenty-two. Uh, we'll, we, we will uh, be presenting soon uh, a little more on the uh, S R grants as uh, more information becomes available and we receive the application full state guidance on the new funds. And now I'll uh, return you to Dr. Goldson to outline her recommendations to reconcile this budget.
Thank you, Mr. Hertzman. Our reconciliation approach is more strategic than just addressing a single year budget gap. Examine some of the major long-term needs of our school district and incorporate its sustainable plans to address them. On the remaining slides, I'll summarize how Prince George's County Public Schools will use funding to accelerate our mental health services expansion, support students in our Bridge to Excellence Schools, comprehensively address student learning loss from the COVID nineteen pandemic, maintain and refresh our student technology moving forward, and utilize the indirect cost recovery provisions in our federal restricted programs. In all of these areas, we focused on long-term sustainability to effectuate positive change toward the grant expirations. There's a sixth part of the balanced budget plan, but it is already completed. In the May twelve financial review, the Board of Education approved transferring, transferring fifteen million dollars to pay the OPEB liability trust, which reduces our obligation for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. So thank you. Next slide, please. Prior to COVID nineteen, we recognized the necessity of expanding mental health supports to students. The pandemic has only intensified this need. Currently, we provide regular therapist support at ninety-three of our schools. By fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, with the help of the Kerwin Concentration of Poverty Grant and the federal S R funds, all schools will be supported by a full-time therapist. Next slide, please. This next chart outlines the strategic rollout plan. This year includes ninety-three schools, but a portion of those only have a part-time therapist. In the upcoming school year, we will roll out to forty-seven additional schools. And any school that is currently part-time will be converted to full-time. We will expand this program to an additional twenty-five schools in fiscal year two thousand twenty-three and the remaining forty-two schools in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. At that point, all schools will have full-time therapy for our students. As the grants conclude, we will continue to prioritize mental health, sustaining this at all schools using our general operating fund. In fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, that means a year-over-year operating fund increase of fifteen point one million dollars. And we are prepared to absorb that with changes in state formula funding that year. As this systemic plan relies exclusively on grant funds for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, it allows us to absorb two point five million in operating funds that are added in my proposed budget for a much smaller expansion, as well as the three million dollars that the Board of Education added for student support in the requested budget. Next slide, please. While all students throughout Prince George's County Public Schools are in need of additional support, we recognize that there are submit, there are specific heightened needs at the Bridge to Excellence Schools. Within the Bridge to Excellence Schools, we will focus in further on children in grades three through nine based on their performance data. They'll be offered extended learning opportunities three days per week from October through April for the next two years. To support this program, the hours will be extended for eight teachers in each elementary school and ten teachers in each secondary school. Transportation will be offered to the students. This intervention will be funded by the federal COVID grants in fiscal year two thousand twenty-two and fiscal year two thousand twenty-three and will replace the Bridge to Excellence Operating Fund supports added to the board's requested budget. Next slide, please. As schools return to predominantly in-person learning, all of our students require additional instructional supports. This will continue to be the focus of the majority of our federal COVID nineteen funding as well as specific state supplemental instruction and tutoring funding. In all, we will spend close to one hundred and ninety million dollars in grant funds to address student learning loss. These robust programs will absorb the intent of the high dosage reading tutoring in the Board of Education's approved budget. Next slide, please. For several years prior to the pandemic, we expanded our stock of student devices with the eventual goal of becoming a one-to-one district. This long-term plan was quickly accelerated, accelerated last March as we were forced into distance learning. Becoming a one-to-one district was not only important to distance learning, it is also critical moving forward that all of our students have direct access to our many digital learning capabilities. However, we now have a much larger stock of devices that we will need to replace every four years. We have updated our technology refresh, refresh plan to account for this long-term liability and to balance purchases over time. Over the next three years, we will utilize S R funding for these purchases. Then in fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, we will again return to the least purchase methodology, methodology with operating dollars. This will allow us to slowly weigh the cost onto the operating fund, beginning with the two point nine million dollar projected year-over-year increase, beginning in fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. From an operating budget perspective, this framework will be sustainable into perpetuity, even as our enrollment continues to grow. Next slide, please. As you will hear in detail in a presentation later tonight on the Kerwin three blueprint, our new grants have substantial requirements for implementation, reporting and especially accountability. Many grants allow us to transfer a small portion of the money to the operating fund to help with the cost, not directly covered by the purpose of the grant, mainly for administrative and implementation costs. With the federal grant expansions for next year, we project that we will receive an additional five point four million dollars for indirect cost recovery. However, a small portion of this amount will be used to help manage the grant, resulting in a four point five million dollar in net savings. That last four point five million dollars will balance the budget. Next slide, please. After tonight, the budget reconciliation will be discussed by the Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee, which will be held on June fifteenth. And then on June twenty-fourth, the Board of Education is scheduled to do an adoption of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two approved operating budget. Thank you for providing me an opportunity to update you on the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two reconciliation of our budget.
Thank you, Dr. Goldson. Are there any comments? Board members will be timed as they present their questions and comments. Board Member Ahmed.
Thank you, Dr. Miller, and thank you uh, Dr. Goldson for that presentation and Chief Hertzman as well. I just had a couple of questions and then a, a request for a follow-up item. Um, I noticed in slide twelve, it says that fifteen million dollars for the ACF project was not included in the proposed budget because cost assumed to be funded through a separate MOU. I was wondering, does that mean that you thought that the county government was going to cover this and they didn't? I'm just trying to figure out how we didn't account for that fifteen million.
Uh, when we presented the budget, we hadn't finalized the MOU. If you recall, we finalized the MOU for ACF after we transferred, when, when I finished my proposed budget. So it was after December. The next part of it is we knew that our portion would be fifteen million. Um, we assumed that it would be on the capital improvement side, on the capital project side, but it is not. It is on the operating side.
And is that something that's going to be continuing year after year? So is this going to be something that we'll have from the operating budget every year here?
Correct.
Okay. Oh, no. Um, I'll, I'll reserve my, that's going to be something that I, I'm going to be thinking about that for a while. Um, the other question I had was, i- it's just a little bit of lack of clarity uh, based upon the PowerPoint of which of the Board of Education requested initiatives have been cut in the reconciliation? I'm not clear on that.
If you could go to slide. I'm going to find the slide with the board um, items on it. I think it is slide, if you could pull it back up, please, Mr. Cooper. Thank you. Um, the board's request. Started on.
Started on, just go on. Thank you.
It's like ten, I believe.
Thank you. Because my pages are all mixed up. There we go. So, there we go. Thank you. So K through three reading tutoring will actually be able to be covered through one of our ASR grants. The Bridge to Excellence School supports will be covered in our, one of our ASR grants. Hopefully, we're hoping to put it in the last one. Supports for act risk students, so mental health is covered. And restorative practices is part was part of the CEO's recommended budget initially. Transit Academy for Working Students was not included in this year's reconciliation. STEAM internship was not included, and Special Education Audit was not included.
All right. Thank you for that. And then my last thing was just a follow-up item. Request is which schools in my district will receive the monies outlined in slide nineteen? I know that's, you know, that that's a request for follow-up.
Thank you. We'll follow up.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And for that slide, we'll provide the list for all schools, not just for that.
Board member, I saw, Board member Williams, hand up.
I just had a quick follow-up question on the the ACF for the six new schools. I believe, I believe that the the plan, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that the operating dollars will come from the fact that we will no longer have those aging school maintenance funds being used. So it's sort of a conversion from a maintenance operating dollar to the operating dollars for the the payment that is due to the to the partner.
That is accurate, and it ends up getting offset from the fifteen million on the capital side. It's just that it's not identified for the fifteen million for ACF on the capital. So we give fifteen million towards other projects, and then it ends up canceling itself out from the operating to the ACF. That is accurate.
Understood. Thank you.
Board member Queen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for recognizing me, Dr. Goldson. My question is, is about the capital program and facilities. Even reading it and listening to you, I know we're saying ensuring the budget adequity reflect the needs of the schools and facilities, distinguish the buildings following the CDC protocol to keep students and staff COVID-free. But as was stated, and we all know, we get the emails, and it was stated by a couple of our speakers, a lot of the ACs and everything was down, HVAC issues. So how is this being addressed in this budget? Even, I mean, I get it, you know, when we close the schools, the schools is closed. They can just do virtual learning, but it was stated even on the meeting you had last night, the town hall meeting. And you stated earlier that we no longer will be having virtual learning because the state has stopped it. So how is that going to be adjusted when we have these air conditioning and these issues? Are we just going to close school when the kids are going to lose learning? Or what are we going to do to put forth and make sure that we address the major maintenance issues in our schools of these old and outdated schools?
Let me just say, one of the luxuries of us being a one-to-one school district is that it allows us, if students have to work from home due to a facility issue, they can still continue with that virtual learning experience at home while we're making that building repair. So that is key, and they don't have, we don't end up having to make that day up at the end of the school year. But what I do want to share around the HVAC issue that we're experiencing right now is really an outgrowth from the pandemic. So what is happening is many of our contractors are not able to get the parts for the repair as quick as they used to because factories have now just gone back into full operation. So there are a lot of items are on back order. So that is why the repair is taking longer than it typically would. Normally, we would, you probably wouldn't even realize that we would because our buildings are so old to have HVAC issues. But our contractors were able to locate the part, fix it right then, and literally we could do it sometimes after school into the wee hours of the night and be ready the next day. What we're experiencing now is a lag time of the contractor getting those parts to make that repair. So that's what you're seeing now. We're hoping that as the summer moves through and our, the industry is back up and running in full-time, that we won't have that long gap in. But our buildings are aging, so we can anticipate that we may have additional HVAC issues.
Okay. I just want a little clarification of understanding. I understand now but going forth back in September, because I don't know if it was the last night or today that I heard, because so much was being going on. But I remember hearing the fact that we will not be having virtual because virtual has stopped. And I mean, it would only be for the younger generation, and then once COVID is went over, over, we will no longer be able to have, we will have the online campus, okay? So what I'm saying is going forth, if we have HVAC or whatever issue, and we're not allowed to have the virtual, how would that be done? I can see now, but school is almost over, less than what, five days? But I'm just saying, going forth, how is that going to be done if we're not going to be able to have virtual? Because in our reality, we know, I mean, each and every one of us, and you guys cannot be in denial, our schools are horrible. I mean, every elected official in this county knows that. If you don't know that, then you need to take time and walk the schools in your community, in your county for the people you represent, for our other elected officials. But we know that. So in saying that, that we know we have old and aging schools that have been overlooked for years, how is that going to happen?
Yeah, we have the authority to do it for a temporary basis, not permanent. And as noted, we're doing it on a school basis. So for example, we had an HVAC issue at Langley Park McCormont. We only put those students on a virtual learning experience for today while the rest of the district was in person. So we can do it for individualized, just not the entire district.
Okay. Thank you so very much. And again, I challenge any elected official to, and I would say any of my board members, I'm sure they will walk with you on the other board members. If they don't have the time, I, as a board member, I would go outside my district and walk with any elected officials throughout schools. So you can see the need, we need financial need to make sure we get these repayers. Thank you so very much, Dr. Goldson.
Are there any additional questions? Board member Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Goldson, I want to thank you for the presentation, specifically for the part regarding the expansion of mental health services. I, I mean, for as long as I've been a student, I've heard the concerns and sentiments expressed by students and community members and parents and, you know, families alike about access to mental health services. And so, I mean, just to see that the vision is to ensure that all of our schools and all of our faculty have the mental health supports they need is something very exciting and is something very beautiful. With that being said, I have a question and then kind of a comment. Point of clarification, when we talk about the expansion of mental health services for our schools, what form does that take? Is that a therapist? Is it a psychologist? Is it a social worker?
It's a, we call them clinicians, mental health practitioner clinicians, and they're from, we typically hire external mental health providers to assist in the use of those clinicians in our schools. I do want to add, because we've had the opportunity now to become one-to-one, sometimes those services are done virtually. Sometimes they're done in person, and sometimes they're done with the student individually or with their family members as well, if they've decided that during those sessions, they might need to add additional members in.
All right. And then as far as my comment goes, it's just kind of food for thought. As a student personally, I've tried to navigate the space of utilizing mental health resources as a student alum who attended a school with mental health supports. I mean, it's hard. It's hard. It's, it's, for a lot of students, it's the idea of out of sight, out of mind. If there isn't this school-based concerted effort to advertise the availability of mental health services, you don't know, you know, you don't know what you don't know about, in that you have access to these services. And so I know that on a district level, we had our mental health series that we had, and I believe like May. I know Board Member Shepherd, when she was a part of our board, our team here, she had a huge push for promotion of mental health services. But if we could work on a school-based level again to make sure that there's a concerted effort to advertise the availability of these services, especially as we see the expansion, I, I think that'd just be the icing on top of the cake.
Thank you for that feedback, and we will do a better job of doing that.
Thank you, Board Member Jackson. Board Member Valentine.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Goldson. My question is more around the hiring freeze that you mentioned previously. Can you speak to just what the administration is doing now to ensure that, you know, by the start of the school year, that we are fully staffed? And so in the event that there are openings, I mean, a lot of parents like myself have to deal with, you know, certain teachers, whether moving on or being on extended leave, what happens when that takes place during a hiring freeze?
Thank you for that question. We actually lifted the hiring freeze, I want to say, April. Look at it, Michael, he might have it exactly. Thank you. We lifted it in April because we were able to realize the savings that we needed, and we wanted to make sure that we did not lose the opportunity to hire and recruit new employees as they join us. So anyone who's listening, I normally have a different virtual background that says Teach with PGTPS. I didn't put it up today, but that still exists. If you are interested in teaching or being part of our administrative staff or central office staff, we are posting positions. They're on our website. We're continuing to conduct interviews. We'll continue to present them to our Board of Education for final approval and review. Our human resources team, this is their high recruitment season, it started in January, and I provided all board members with the fiscal year recruitment, recruitment manual, which I provided in a weekly update. They started in January, and they're continuing to move forward as we fill additional seats of, for employees. So we are looking for all employees, those who are wanting to now enter the field of education. We look forward to having you apply to be a part of the Prince George's County Public School professional family.
If I could also add on that. Mr. Valentine, sorry, that when we did have the hiring freeze in place from last October through April, it was for non-school-based employees. So we continued throughout that period hiring teachers and all other school staff.
So you don't anticipate having to revert to that in the future, based on the current budget projections?
For next year, we don't know what next year yields, but we sure hope not.
Thank you, Mr. Board Member Valentine. Board members, Adam Stafford.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Dr. Goldson, for your presentation. I was really happy to see the inclusion of the Bridge to Excellence Schools and how we're going to be able to support that with some of that federal funding. I just had a quick question regarding how exactly though that funding will be used within those schools? I know you mentioned the extended school day, which is, which is awesome. But in addition, I was wondering if there would be some funding for professional development, specifically around some innovative instructional models like project-based learning or mastery-based learning, and possibly some incentives for some of our nationally board-certified teachers? I know we have such high accolades nationally for having some of the most diverse, I think we're number four nationally with the most diverse nationally board-certified teachers in the country. And so how can we get some more of those teachers to come to those schools as well as principals? So those were just some of my questions around the funding for PT. Thank you.
I'll start with the last one. You mentioned the nationally board-certified teachers is covered under the Kerwin II now funding, and that presentation is coming next. There is a now statewide plan in order to look at nationally certified teachers. So that presentation will be done by Dr. Libby right after this. In terms of professional development, that will funding would not be, we would not be able to utilize the ASR II funding for professional development. But there is a provision, one of the fourteen provisions around professional development in ASR III. So once we get those notes for that, we'll be able to look to see if it can be utilized. But it wouldn't be just for Bridge to Excellence schools. It would be all schools and continued professional development for our teachers.
That it? Any other questions? Then, Dr. Goldson, we'll move on to the next blueprint for Maryland's Future.
Thank you. It gives us great pleasure to present the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, better known as Kerwin II, which we just shared was approved April ninth by our General Assembly. And just want to say thank you to our delegation, our House delegation and Senate delegation for their continued commitment to begin to bridge the gap for all children across the state of Maryland. Dr. Libby, who serves as our strategic officer for this major work, will provide the overview of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. Dr. Libby.
Good evening. Blueprint for Maryland's Future, also known as Kerwin. Next slide. You can go to the next slide. We wanted to begin with a quote from Mr. Kerwin himself. And if you could just take a few moments to read that for yourself.
Madam Chair, can we ask Dr. Libby to read this? I really believe we have a diverse side, and I know we assume that everybody can read, you guys, but we have listeners who cannot read that are adults. So can we read it also out loud?
Sure. Our state and national struggles with COVID-19 and the growing demands for social justice have only accentuated the need for better, more equitable education in our nation, not just Maryland. Our children should not have to wait any longer for the quality of education they need and deserve. And the purpose is for quality education for all students. Thank you, Ms. Queen. The focus areas for this current school year included special education, concentration of poverty, also known as our community schools, mental health, transitional supplemental instruction for reading and mathematics, and universal pre-kindergarten. Our focus areas for the upcoming school year will include summer school, early education programs, transitional supplemental instruction for grades K through three, tutoring and supplemental instruction for grades four through twelve, concentration of poverty, behavioral health supports, ninth grade tracker system, and educator career matters. I will highlight each of those areas in the slides to follow, starting with summer school. Summer school will be July sixth through the thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Rising kindergartners through grade twelve, a focus on learning laws. For elementary, the students will be in person, and they will have reading English Language Arts and or mathematics. They will also have accountability coaches. For middle and high, students will be virtual, and they will also have accountability coaches. Meals will be provided for all students. In addition, we will have incentive pay for teachers and other school system employees who will work the Learning Law Summer Program. Under early education programs, we received the pre-K enhancement grant from the Maryland State Department of Education for a summer program. This program will provide learning recovery, resources, support for students who are at risk, students who are at or below the thirty percent income lab level, students who have an IEP, and were not enrolled in one of our pre-K summer programs during this past school year. The Early Childhood Office will ensure that current pre-K students and any new kindergarten students entering PGTPS will have the opportunity to participate in the summer program this summer. Yep, next slide. Also, under the Judy Center, I'm sorry, also under the early education programs, we will have Judy Centers. Judy Centers are located in Title I schools throughout the state of Maryland. MSD would like to have nine new Judy Centers across the state of Maryland between now and twenty twenty-five. MSD would like to have eighteen new Judy Centers statewide between twenty twenty-six and twenty thirty. Currently, we have two, Comedy Hills and Adelphi, and we will add a third one for the upcoming school, school year at Hill Chris Heights. Thank you for everybody's doing the slides. Transitional supplemental instruction, also known as TSI. The previous two years, we focused on students in grades K through two. This year, we will, this upcoming school year, we will focus with students in grades K through three in reading and mathematics. Students can receive one-on-one or small group tutoring during the school day or after school, but the groups have to remain small, no more than four students per group. Students will receive a pre and a post test in order to evaluate their performance before and after receiving the TSI services. This is the list of a of our current TSI elementary school. We've had these schools for the past two years and the teams will continue with the schools in the upcoming school year. The schools were chosen based on their reading and mathematics scores during the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. For grades four through twelve, another focus on learning loss, tutoring and supplemental instruction for reading English language arts and mathematics. Again, after school tutoring, small groups of no more than four students aligned to our curriculum, pre and post test for students, and we will have an evaluation of the program. Thank you. As you saw in the previous presentation, we will have seventy seven community schools for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. This is an increase of thirteen additional schools. Currently, we have sixty five community schools. But due to a difference in the way the state is considering alternative schools, Annapolis Road Academy will be taken off this list. It will not be a community school for the upcoming school year. And this is our list of the new community schools for the twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. Concentration of poverty, again, community schools. Our community schools currently and the new schools will have a community school coordinator, a healthcare practitioner. As you heard in the previous presentation, all schools will have a mental health clinician. But then also with our community schools, we have these wraparound services. And I just want to highlight a few of the wraparound services from this previous, this current school year. For example, at Cherokee Lane, Lane, students and families participated in brighter fights to learn about food and nutrition. At Hollywood Elementary School for the upcoming school year, they will have a fully funded Boys and Girls Club. Other examples include Gaywood and Blainsburg. They have a partnership with the Capital Area Food Bank to have food pantries for the families in their communities. And then United Way assisted with internet access for families in the Flintstone, Valley View, Glass Manor communities, just to name a few. And again, those are just a few examples of our wraparound services for community schools. We can go to the next one. Thank you. In addition to our in-school mental health clinicians, we also have a mental health district coordinator. That person does professional development services for students and staff, partnerships, grant writing and other responsibilities. Also, this this current school year, there was a partnership with the Prince George's Crisis Mobile Team to improve the support for students who were, students who had thoughts and or behaviors pertaining to suicide. They, oh, the coordinator also has monthly meetings with the mental health agencies, provides training to principals for the role of the mental health clinician in schools, presents workshops for all PGTPS staff on trauma and self-care and also delivers workshops for PTAs, parents and families on behavioral and mental health. Now we can go to the next slide. Thank you. Behavioral health supports. Because of our Kerwin two funding that is forthcoming, we will be able to help students who have experienced learning loss, but also in conjunction with trauma and behavioral health issues. So PGTPS will be able to identify supports and services for students, provide behavioral health services to students, monitor students, develop key metrics and evaluate the effectiveness of the services. We are currently working on a plan and that plan is due to the state legislature prior to September first, twenty twenty one. Ninth grade tracker system is another focus area under Kerwin two. It will measure each ninth grade student's progress toward graduating high school on time. Currently, the area office, Division of Accountability and the Division of Student Services is working on a plan. They have begun to review data. They are meeting with a contractor. They're looking at the general requirements needed for this tracker system. It will be part of a of our current data warehouse. They are just at the beginning stages, so the tracker system is only about ten to fifteen percent complete, but the tentative launch date is for mid-September twenty twenty one. And then our final area of focus for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, as some of you have already discussed, the the educator career ladders. Educator career ladders will be implemented over the next several years. Professionally certified classroom teachers and non-administrative school-based employees who hold national board certification will continue to receive a stipend. Continue to receive a stipend. Educator career ladders must be implemented by July first, twenty twenty. Are only required for teachers hired on or after July first, twenty twenty four. I'm sorry, implemented by July first, twenty twenty four. And then school systems aren't are encouraged to opt in existing teachers into the career ladders. Educator career ladders. On this slide, in the next two slides, I'm going to share what's forthcoming in terms of other programs for Kerwin two. Please keep in mind that TSI for grades K through three and community schools will continue over the next several years. For twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, we will continue with our summer school program in during the summer of twenty twenty two. College and career-ready standards are coming back again. The state will assess tenth graders in English and mathematics, and we will continue our collaboration with community college colleges on the transition courses. Tutoring and supplemental instruction for grades four through twelve will continue for next school year. And the salary increases will begin for the education career ladder. Salary increases will begin. Moving into twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, a continuation of the college and career-ready standards, expansion of early college, dual enrollment, career and technical education, also known as CTE. I've already mentioned the educator career ladder. By twenty twenty four, MSDE will provide training to the local school systems to help implement the educator career ladders. And then full-day Kenny, full-day kindergarten will be available for third, for three and four-year-olds from low-income families. And then I kind of jump ahead to twenty twenty five, twenty thirty one. Continuation of college and career-ready standards. Educator career ladder, where the minimum salary is to begin by twenty twenty eight. Twenty thirty, principals must have a national board certification and or a waiver. The state will provide more funding for technology. The career and technical education was a previous goal of students, forty-five percent of students in Prince George's County earning a CTE or apprenticeship credential. But what they did, they pushed out the year. So now it's in, now we have to have that by twenty thirty one. And that concludes my presentation for the Blueprint of Maryland's Future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Libby. Um, are there any questions? Board Member Queen.
Thank you so very much on such a good report, but I just have one question. For the schools that are under the Kerwin Commission about the summer school programs. Because I'm wondering, you know, with especially being on the Kerwin, it seemed like it was a limited schools that would open and maybe Dr. Golson, you can help me with this one. Uh, for in-school learning for the elementary school kids. Um, if I could remember, it was like you had to maybe go all the way to Greenbelt or something if your child needed math um in person. So I'm wondering with us having these schools that are under this, why none of the schools are opening for in-school in the areas for the students?
Oh, summer school is pre-K to grade twelve. What we did was offer um in support of Board Member Adam Stafford's Learning Hubs, decided to try to do them across the district. So it's not just for mathematics, it's reading, English, language arts and math. What we can do is go back and look at the list again to make sure it's throughout the district and it's not concentrated in one specific area.
Okay, cuz I could, cuz I wanted to put my granddaughter in the math, but it was like all the way in the green belt and I'm like, I'm not getting up and driving in the green belt every day. But I know she needs the math. So I just think the the hubs need to be available for people in the community, especially in, well, I look at in District Six where transportation for a lot of our students, they just don't have. And we want to make sure that we are being diverse across the board to make sure that everyone is able to get to these places that is needed to make sure the students are able to get that lesson. So thank you for looking into that.
We'll provide transportation, there are twenty hubs, so we'll go back and look at their locations.
Thank you.
A board member, Ahmed.
Thank you, Dr. Miller, and thank you, Dr. Golson, Dr. Libby for that presentation. Um, my question is just, uh, it's probably a follow-up item is I would love to see the numbers, the the budget numbers that are associated with each of these uh different elements. Um, I know that, uh, you know, we're starting our next fiscal year in July, just a couple of weeks away. And I would love to be able to explain to folks, this is the amount of money that's being contributed to each of these different programs um as we go into the fall. Is that all right? Can we get that information? Okay, thank you. That's all.
Board Member Adam Stafford.
Thank you so much for the presentation and I just had two quick questions. Uh, maybe I didn't hear this and if if it was mentioned, just forgive me, but if if you could maybe talk a little bit about the NBC uh incentives, would there be incentives for folks that do attain that certification to teach at some of our lower-performing schools? Or is that something that could be a possibility? Um, and then also, uh, in thinking about the ninth grade tracker, I was really excited to hear about funding being used for that. And I know at our AAC meeting, uh, Dr. White and her team talked about um some of how ninth, how ninth grade is an indicator of graduation uh rates and particularly particularly, we want to support our Latino male youth who um have a high dropout rate and could some of the inputs to that tracker um reflect possible partnerships or mentoring supports that we may provide to groups of students to help them um ensure that they're promoted to tenth grade?
I just want to make sure you know that our current nationally board certified teachers get a four thousand dollar stipend. And um that will be continued at least for PGTPS staff until the career ladder piece has been worked out in terms of an incentive. Um, the Kerwin legislation is not that functioned that way because they're expecting, what they really ultimately want are all teachers to be done nationally board certified, not to be nationally board certified in place in certain schools. Um, and then we have provided a stipend before to to teachers who were in um in schools that had a high retention rate through another grant. So we have done that before. And then what was the other question?
Uh, just asking about some of the inputs for the ninth grade tracker and thinking about, you know, how can we track and and sort of qualify um like community supports and mentoring programs and wraparound supports for our um populations of students that um have lower graduation rates. And I was thinking specifically about our presentation that we saw regarding our Latino uh male youth.
The very first part of that freshman tracker is first just to identify some really key factors that are hindrances for students moving from grades nine to twelve. So it's community service credit, um courses, how they did in middle school. We are fortunate that in our tracker, um, we've already started the process of creating one before Kerwin legislation came before us. It'll look very similar to if you go to the school's landing pages that have their data um dashboards, there'll be some, they'll be very similar to that, easy to read and for our principals to be able to really drill down directly to the student level. Once we have that data, then we through ninth grade either academy programs that exist in our schools then begin to provide individualized and targeted supports in order to create safety nets for the students to go from grade nine to ten.
Thanks so much.
A board member, Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Libby, for your presentation. It was very thorough. I appreciate all the information. Um, I I'm looking at two of the topics that you discussed. The CTE programs, um, you mentioned that the the date of our achievement level has been pushed back one year. What is our current level of achievement for CTE and the seniors that are graduating? Uh, what was the last one prior to COVID?
Yeah, I have to go back and look and give you that information.
I just wanted to get, to take that down as a baseline, just so I can, you know.
I do recall, I think we did provide it by the actual strand, but I'll go back and pull it so we can.
Okay, cuz I know we we've been going up in in that number over the last five years. And so I just want to sort of see the pre- pre-COVID. So I just wanted to see the trend and see if that trend looks as if we're really um stretching ourselves a little higher to reach that by thirty thirty, uh, twenty thirty one? Or is it still along the same lines of as our current trend data is showing? Because I know we've done a lot to um, one, increase more CTE programs that are available to students and how we advertise to students in the middle school level so that they can choose the CTE programs early enough. And I, we've also done some things so that they don't have to leave their school in the eleventh grade. So we've done a lot to sort of encourage CTE. And so I just want to look to see if our trend to achieve the thirty, the twenty thirty one. And so I just want to look to see if our trend to achieve the 2031 rate, is that stretching ourselves? Or are we sort of going along the same line? The other question is around the National Board certified teachers. I was wondering, I love the fact that we're not just sending them in areas in schools that are challenged. I think that every school deserves, you know, a high number of National Board certified teachers in their school. And so I was wondering if we could get a list of the numbers of National Board certified teachers that are in each school. Do you all have that available?
We do, and I think I provided it to you all about a month ago, because I know Board Member Adam Stafford asked for it, so I gave it for everyone. I'll go back and resend that.
Okay, just let me know if you did, and then I'll go take a look. Was that in your weekly report?
It was in another separate email.
Okay.
Program, the program recognition.
It was right after that.
Right after, okay. I'll look that up then, no worries. And I was wondering if we could add that as one of the points of measure on our school landing pages, you know, with the thing that has all of our data for each school. I think it would be great to know. I think if we work collectively, we know what our number is in a certain school, then the PTAs, the administration, and everyone can sort of work together to sort of encourage teachers to go after that certification. So, thank you very much.
Any further discussion, questions? Thank you, Dr. Goldson. Now we're going to move into Governor's Second Reader. Dr. Goldson, would you please introduce items 6.1 through 6.2?
These items are actually board items? 6, 1, and 2 are board items.
Are any items, are there any items Board members wish to remove? We're going to move into.
No, Dr.
You just need to introduce them, that's all. It's just that they're board items.
No problem. 6.1 is the 2021-2022 Board of Education Meeting Calendar. I need a motion to approve item 6.1.
Motion to accept.
Board Member Ahmed.
Dr. Miller, I do have a motion to approve it, but I do have a couple of amendments. And so I would like to move to approve the meeting calendar with the following amendments. To remove the summer six-week board break and to add 5:00 PM executive sessions and 7:00 PM board meetings on July 15th, July 29th, December 9th, January 27th, and May 26th. And I can explain myself if there is a second.
Second.
Can you get that?
Moved. And second to accept the 2021-22 Board Meeting Calendar with the additions that Board Member Ahmed just included. I didn't write all of them down. Would you repeat them, please?
Yes, ma'am. I may repeat them, and I will explain why too. So the first thing was remove the summer six-week board break. And the second was to add 5:00 PM executive sessions and 7:00 PM board meetings on July 15th, July 29th, December 9th, January 27th, and May 26th. And the reason, those are all on Thursdays. The reason that I'm bringing forward this with amendments is because I looked at the Board Action Summary. And in the Board Action Summary, it says that the calendar that is up on Board Docs, that that calendar is not in compliance with two of the board policies. And so it says in the board policies that, in the board policy, you're supposed to be meeting twice a month, except for certain months where we can meet once a month. And it, you know, it doesn't give any type of credence to July or special movement for July. So that's why I made the amendments. It's strictly to be able to be in alliance with, you know, alignment with the policy.
Is this a board policy already?
Yes, ma'am.
Making reference to, so if it's a board policy, we have the opportunity or privilege to revise it. Am I correct?
Yes, due to, you know, it can be revised in the policy. I can quote the Board Action Summary here. It says Board Action Summary, an outline of Dr. Miller's recommendation to the Board of Education. The abstract and highlights, this is a proposed Board of Education Meeting Calendar for the 2021-2022 school year. While consistent with previous calendars, this calendar does not seem to be in compliance with Board Policy 8100 or Board Bylaw 9361. In the excerpt from Board Policy 8100, it says the board will meet annually in June to determine committee assignments. In the excerpt from Board Bylaw 9361, it says the board shall schedule regular meetings at least once a month during the months of August, November, and December, and twice a month at all other times.
Board Member Queen.
I just want clarification. Is it because, and I don't know if Board Members have been here like two and a half years, but is it because we have them a BAFA Committee or Budget Committee meetings, they consider it as some of the meetings? I'm just wondering, because you know, sometimes we do them meetings where people come in, they talk, and we sit there in listening session, were they included? Maybe you think maybe that's one of the reasons why. I mean, can anybody clarify, maybe a more experienced Board Member who's been here longer?
Dr. Miller, if I may respond, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, it's, Ms. Queen, in the excerpt, it says the board shall schedule regular meetings at least once a month. So I imagine that means a regular board meeting. But I've, you know, there are two Board Members here that have been here at least longer than me that I can, that I know on this board. That may have a different viewpoint.
Anybody else? Any comments? Board Member Williams.
I think I'd like to ask that we table this item until other Board Members have had an opportunity to consider the dates that have been presented to us for the first time today. I know that there are a number of items that come up in the summertime that we would have to work around, including Board Office Staff, Board Administration Staff, Board Member Staff, in doing especially the summer months. But I do agree that we, this year in particular, that we may need to have board meetings in the middle of the summer due to the fact that we are going through a transition in the board office. So I can understand the intent of needing the letter of the policy. But this is the first time that I'm hearing about it, and I believe many of the other Board Members are hearing about it. So to vote on something that we haven't had an opportunity since the first reader was done to take a vote on something that is presented to us for the first time, maybe we can table this so that we can look at the logistics of having the meetings, especially in January, looking at the weather. The December meeting, I think we usually hold that around the CEO's recommendation for our presentation of the budget. So there are a number of things that we would have to look at logistically to see if it will work. But I think that we have the ability, as you have seen in many times in the recent past, to weigh a policy. So I just recommend that we table this item until the next board meeting so that we can have an opportunity to ask questions of the maker of the motion.
Well, do you want us to take action on that? Well, let's hear from Board Member Boozer Struther first.
Thank you so much, Chair Miller. I guess I'm just trying to understand, did the draft, who drafted this Board Action Summary that calls this out? That there's this inconsistency with Board Policy 8100 and Board Bylaw 9361?
Board Member Ahmed.
It has your name on it, Dr. Miller, so I'm just, I'm confused about who, this has been called out, but has it been called out by you, Chair Miller, or did someone else write this?
I believe that it was written by our Director of Policy, Mr. Brandon Cooper. And if he's on the line, he can discuss that.
Thank you.
Good evening. Yes, I met with Vice Chair Williams probably early this week, and I part her attention that the policy conflicts with the calendar. And she suggested to put together a Board Action Summary in Dr. Miller's name for posting on Board Docs before we had discussion tonight. So yeah, I did bring it to Ms. Williams' attention.
Thank you.
And I apologize for not catching that, that it had your name on it, Dr. Miller, in that capacity. Because that was just, your name should have only been as the signatory of that document, as we do with every Board Action Summary.
Thank you. Board Member Queen.
I kind of agree with Board Member Williams that we should table this vote, because I'm still questioning, because I know it's been on a BAFA Committee since I've been on a board. We've held three community meetings, and they're not meetings that are scheduled in the calendar. We just schedule these dates. So we're talking about, and I mean, I'm committed as a Board Member, I don't know about you, but I know some of you guys have regular jobs. So we're talking about having meetings every month and then throwing in three other meetings, so some months it'll be three meetings. So I think we really need to just redo this policy and go over it and make sure that we understand actually what we're saying, but that's all. Thank you.
So may I have a motion to table this item?
What, Sonia made that motion?
They're moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to table the Board of Education Meeting Calendar until the next board meeting. And by that time, Mr. Cooper will get with the Chair and Vice Chair and look at what can be revised and what recommendations have been made. Send the copy out to the rest of the Board Members for input and a response prior to our June 24th meeting. Board Member Ahmed.
Hey, Dr. Miller, just as a point of order, I wanted to make sure that it's noted for the record that I think properly should be a substitute motion to the original motion, which is fine. I mean, it's just a matter of making it a matter of the record that this is a substitute motion. That's all.
Okay, wasn't Ms. Williams the original person making the motion?
I made a motion that was seconded, and then it was.
Okay. For the record. Duly noted. All right, we've tabled item 6.1. Let's move to 6.2, English.
Dr. Miller, we have to vote on the motion.
Getting late. Okay. I, we have a motion that has been seconded to table item 6.1, 2021-2022 Board of Education Meeting Calendar until the next meeting of the board, which is June 24th. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any abstentions? The motion carries. The next item is item English learner, English language learners' focus work group report and recommendations. Can I get a motion to approve item 6.2?
Dr. Miller, I believe Board Member Ahmed should introduce that item as the second reader, or Board Member Nina Jackson.
Which?
I'll be doing it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Miss Board Member Jackson.
No worries. The colleagues at the last Board of Education meeting, Board Member Ahmed presented to you all the ELL Focus Work Group recommendations for first reader, including revisions that were made and voted on by members of the work group at our May 5th meeting. Before we get into the swing of things, I just want to take this opportunity to firstly thank Board Member Ahmed for even embarking on this journey with me. Some of you who followed my campaign for student board member maybe tuned into it know very well that doing something, or you saw in ELL community, was always on my heart and always on my mind, even prior to my service or tenure as student board member. And so Board Member Ahmed was crazy enough as I was to, again, embark on this journey with me, and so thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ahmed. With that being said, I would also like to thank our Focus Work Group members, members of administration, board colleagues, and committee members who provided feedback, insight, and asked questions, all to ensure that when it came to putting out our final recommendation, we were putting out nothing less than our best foot forward. And I hope that you all really just feel inclined and inspired to support the adoption of our recommendations. And so that's the presentation.
Thank you. Any comments, Board Member Ahmed?
Hey, Dr. Miller, I am very excited that this is coming forward to you all. I think it's a big staple for us as a board, because this is the first work group that we have that has come forward with recommendations. And if we pass it tonight, then what it shows is that this process works and that it can work continuously for the Climate Action Work Group, for the School to Prison Pipeline Work Group, and for anything else that's coming after this. And so I'm very excited as well, because I feel like this is the first time that something like this has been done in a holistic way for our English Language Learner students, for our immigrant students, and for those students that maybe don't see themselves always at the front of people's thoughts and minds. And so I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be bringing this forward with you alongside Board Member Jackson and the other members of the Focus Work Group. And I hope that we're able to enact all of the adopted, future adopted recommendations in the coming years. Thank you, Dr. Miller, for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Board Member Queen.
Thank you so very much, Madam Chair, for recognizing me. I just want to say again, kudos to Board Member Ahmed, if it was already said by Ms. Jackson. But especially kudos to Board Member Jackson, who stepped up and did something that are hard for the students. That says a lot for a student board member to take the time and do something that she not only knows is dear to her heart, it's because she witnesses as a student at our school the need. So I just want to say, even as you're leaving, how proud we are of you. Not only as a Prince George's County public student, you make us so proud, but the fact that you gave up your time to invest and to push things through for your fellow students and colleagues, even the ones that you're leaving behind, because you're moving on to better things. And we know you're going to do bright things and continue to make us proud, but we will continue to be proud of you. And this says a lot about you as a person, and I just want to say again, thank you. Thank you for representing the students. Thank you for pushing forth your best while you have been on the board to make sure you can do whatever you can do to leave an impact for the students of Prince George's County Public Schools. And to my fellow colleagues, I hope you will support this wholeheartedly, because it is for the students. And this is what we do. Every day, we serve for the betterment of our students. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Board Member Queen. Now, may I get a motion? Would you give me a motion? May I have a motion?
I move for the full adoption of the ELL Focus Work Group recommendations.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the ELL Focus Work Group Report and Recommendations. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any ayes?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Roll call. Ms. Berkeley.
Yes, ma'am.
Roll call.
Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Yes.
Mrs. Ahmed.
Yes.
Ms. Boozer Strather.
Yes.
Mr. Burrows.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Montero.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mrs. Queen.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Valentine.
Aye.
Mrs. Williams.
Abstaining, there may be a conflict.
And Dr. Miller.
Yes. Motion, the motion carries. Thank you. Now we will move to 7.0, New Business First Reader. Board Member Burrows, please introduce item 7.1, School to Prison Pipeline. Board Member Burrows, please introduce item seven point one, School to Prison Pipeline Focus Work Group.
Good evening, colleagues. Uh, the only, uh, addition to what the board has already approved is a list of work group members. Uh, I move to approve this list.
Has everyone seen the list? Is there a second to his motion?
Second.
It has been moved in second to accept for first reader, the School to Prison Pipeline Focus Work Group. Um, all in favor? Oh, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries with the consensus of the, uh, board members. Thank you. We will now move into approve actions taken in executive session. A motion and a second is needed to approve the action, the actions taken in executive session on June tenth, twenty twenty-one as follows. To receive a report from the CEO regarding the administration of the school system to discuss personnel matters regarding the appointment, employment, and removal of certain employees. To discuss union negotiation status, uh, update. To receive a report from the Office of Internal Audit. To discuss the board office administrative matters and to discuss the annual review of the CEO. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
You need a motion?
Oh.
Oh. It's late. Okay.
I'm making a motion.
Very much. May I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the actions taken in the executive session of June tenth, twenty twenty-one. All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain, I wasn't present.
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? So we have one extension with the not, uh, fact that the board member was not in attendance. Therefore, we have a consensus vote, and the motion carries to accept or approve the actions taken in the executive session on June tenth, twenty twenty-one. Thank you, board members. Uh, follow-up items from May twenty-sixth, special board meeting are posted in board docs. Now, uh, are there any other discussions relative to that? If not, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved in second to adjourn tonight's meeting. I thank everyone for your cooperation and patience, and let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Is the consensus of this group that this meeting, um, is adjourned?
Everybody.
Be safe and be careful.